Good evening. I'm going to open the August 22 meeting of the Newton Planning Board and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. First item on our agenda is Mr. George Twist and Attorney Hogan have asked to come to speak to us, so if you'd get -- go to the podium and identify yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board members, and again for the record, my name is Scott Hogan. I've been working with George Twist and if I may, I'll just do a quick kind of overview of what got us here. I submitted a letter to the Board back in February regarding the duplex cluster development that was approved on property behind George Twist's property. And when we were here last, which was June 13th, we had gone through a process where I had submitted the letter in February and I was raising issues to the Board of compliance with the Board's original approval of this project. It was and is, as we speak, in the process of construction. And the two issues I was specifically raising with the Board were issues regarding buffering between existing residential properties and the development and issues of drainage as well. And back then, the one thing, and I'm not going to go through all of that again, and just to kind of reiterate briefly where I'm going to go tonight, I had pointed out at the time that this kind of a development, this kind of a cluster development pursuant to your own ordinance, specifically kind of called out the fact that it is different from what is normally allowed with traditional single-family residential development. And so it had some very specific requirements for any kind of cluster development to be approved. And your ordinance specifically specified the fact that this kind of an open space cluster development was intended to be a method of development that's consistent with principles of sound planning and wise land use that are not specifically permitted in the current zoning ordinance. And then it specified that the Planning Board's obligation when it was reviewing any application for such a project was to ensure that such an open space cluster development does not adversely impact neighboring properties or the citizens in town of Newton and that the Planning Board shall consider various purposes in reviewing an application. And one of them was maintaining and preserving the rural character of the town by allowing this kind of alternative development option which preserves large areas of open space and provides for visual buffers from existing roads and residential development and permits farming opportunities on parcels of open space. So when this was originally before the Board, and this, we go back now to February of 2013. And so back then, when George Twist came to the Board, as it's expressed in your minutes from back then, George came and stated his concerns regarding how the development will adversely impact already poor water drainage. He also asked if a tree line buffer could be retained to protect natural views from his home. And one of the things that I've done in the course of interacting with the Board is I submitted a number of correspondence and I submitted a variety of photographs that just showed the site conditions. And so one of the things, just in looking back on this and preparing to come to the Board tonight, it kind of struck me in the language that I just read to you, was, so here was George back in 2013 and he came for the first time to the Board on this project and asked if a tree line buffer could be retained between his property and the current construction site. And that word is really important because it shows the fact that at that time, there was in fact, a very established dense mature tree buffer between the Twist property and this site. And the photos that I've sent, that I submitted to the Board, what I was trying to do in some ways was give you the before and after in a quick, in a quick way. And I'm just gonna, while I speak, I'm just gonna give these to the Board members and you can pass them around.
Well, we have already seen them.
Yes, and just for purposes, again, of reminding us all, so before, before, in summer conditions, in leaf-on conditions, in winter conditions, in leaf-off conditions, before, there was an established tree buffer between these two properties, which is the reason why George came in and said, "I would like you to retain the buffer that exists." When you all came back and were actually in the process of reviewing the property itself, or the application, I should say, there was language in April or so of your minutes that said, and Mr. Doggett, I believe you were the one that said, suggested that a 25-foot buffer be added to the plan. And so the only, the only distinction I want to really make sure there, we understand, it wasn't adding a buffer, it was retaining the one that already existed back then. So factually, there was an established buffer under every condition and every season between the Twist property and the development that we're talking about now. And George asked that that be retained. So the after conditions, and again, I've submitted the photos, but I'll just hold them up, after, there is no buffer. The plan, and if we're, and in terms of the before and after conditions, the pre-construction plans that the Board had in front of it when it was reviewing the project, I've done the yellow highlighting here, but the yellow highlighting that I've done on the plan that was in front of the Board shows the existence of what used to be the tree line between the two properties. And it went all the way from the entrance on Route 108 down the side of the new access road. There's a corner here that goes back, this is behind the Twist property, which is here, and it extended all the way across the perimeter of the new site and the existing residential property owner's site. So before conditions in photographs, before conditions on the plans, and the after conditions were the plans that we've been looking at since then. So there was discussion about a 25-foot buffer. The new plan that we've all been discussing shows the 25-foot buffer, but when it gets down to the point that is actually behind George Twist's property, there are various notations that say no-cut buffer width varies and it is as illustrated on this plan. At the time when I was raising these issues, part of my questions to the Board, and then the town engineer was engaged to go out and check the site, there were, the buffer did extend around this corner to come up along the entrance road, which is pretty important to George Twist's property because all of the cars that are going to come into this site, at night, the headlight wash will go completely across his property as they come in and take a right-hand turn. And when they come out, there's also the same. So I brought those, I brought those facts up that said, "This is a cluster development, your ordinance requires buffering." The town engineer was engaged after some months following my initial letter to the Board. I went out and I met the town engineer, I met Mr. Bartlett on the site, and we all walked around, we had a conversation about that, and it was decided that the town engineer would come back after Mr. Bartlett's crew had gone out and staked out what they believed to be the buffer. When we came in here, June 13th, and I understand only after the fact now, that the town engineer had submitted a second report, and when we were here the last time, and I went through a very similar discussion that I just gave the Board, it was then decided last time, the Board suggested that the Planning Board not take jurisdiction over this and not discuss it any further until Town Council had been consulted with. And at the last meeting in June, you moved to convey the situation to Town Council for input and guidance. So off we went, and that was June 13th. And so several weeks later, having not heard back from anyone, I contacted Sumner Kalman because I know Sumner pretty well, and at that point, this was probably the end of June, Sumner had no knowledge of the issue that I was raising and he said he would need to hear from the Board. So eventually, I think it was July 17th, after several more attempts on my part, I got an email giving me the town engineer's report from the beginning of June. And that report basically said that they checked and it all looks consistent with the plan. When I was in here in June, though, some of the questions I was asking the Board was, you know, I don't know if the town engineer was specifically looking at the area along the entrance road because certainly in my sitewalk with the town engineer and Mr. Bartlett, they staked to that corner. And we didn't really have any discussion on the site about the distance between there and the entrance off of Route 108 along the side of the Twist property, and they were pretty much focused on the area behind. When I got that report from Mike Vignali and he said, "It looks consistent with the plan," again, I was, I was a little surprised because there was no discussion of that area along the entrance road toward 108. And I was surprised only because Mike himself, when he gave the Board his original report in March, specifically said, "There are other areas, wetlands towards Route 108 at the large culvert, where some cutting may have occurred within the no-cut buffer." The other issue I've raised are issues of drainage. And so back in March, Mike also said, "Increases in proposed drainage flows to abutting properties from proposed developments is not permitted by the Town of Newton Land Development Regulations." And then his, his takeaway on that was that he said after reviewing the plans that the Board had sent to him during your own review of this, "No increase in flow to downstream areas was indicated in the approved documents." So the approval said, "Town of Newton does not allow increased downstream flow." And in March, that was what Mike had pointed out. Our complaint in February and our discussion with the Board in June was exactly that since the construction of this project, there has been increased downstream flow on George Twist's property and the other downstream residential abutters. And it's fairly intuitive because the whole stormwater design for this project, instead of putting the stormwater to the rear of the property where the wetlands are in the quote-unquote "open space," it was all designed basically to take the water and put it into the stream between this property and George Twist's property. So the experience that certainly George Twist and his neighbors have been having since the construction is that there is obvious increased downstream flow because all the stormwater from the project is diverted there as part of the design.
Okay, excuse me, Ms. Rowden?
I just want to point out, and very specifically to the drainage, the Planning Board concerning the drainage has done its due diligence. You have very little ability to do anything concerning it. It is at this point a code enforcement and the Select Board matter. The power of the Code Enforcement Officer of the Select Board is they could go and seek to have engineering, more engineering work done to see if what is occurring that Mr. Twist and his attorney are stating is occurring is, and if that case, that would be a violation of your site plan regulations. You know, how that occurred, I can't speak to. That's the procedure that you would go through to amend that. So your authority in this, other than you could revoke a site plan, which I would not advise at this point, you have no authority over this complaint.
Well, in that respect, because the specific process that we've actually been through, when I submitted my original complaint to the Planning Board, and again, it was alleging that there were two conditions of approval that we believed to be in violation, drainage is one of them, the other is buffering. So when I submitted that to this Board, and, and the Board has an April 4th letter from me after the fact, where I cataloged the process that the town put us through, and the first thing the town did after receiving my response was to inform me that they'd been sent to the Code Enforcement Officer. That was February 23rd. I called Ms. Cardoso to discuss that, and after March 1, March 6, into the end of March, there was a process back and forth where the town and Ms. Cardoso told me that she had received that. She then got back to me to tell me that it wasn't within her jurisdiction and she was sending it back to the Planning Board. And she apologized to me for getting bounced back and forth between Code Enforcement and the Planning Board. So we, we went there on both the drainage and the buffering issues. She said it wasn't within her jurisdiction, it was sent back to the Planning Board, and then we followed up through March and April. It was after that that the Planning Board itself authorized the town engineer to go to the site and investigate the allegations that we were making.
And he, he looked and in his, in his memos, he says, "Everything that's been done out there is according to the plan that was approved."
So yes, and I appreciate that point. And so what I'm trying to emphasize to the Board is, I think we can all agree that your zoning ordinance requires visual buffers between a cluster development and existing residential properties. If we don't agree, I'd like to have a conversation about that.
We can have a discussion of what a buffer is. I mean, from the pictures that you showed from pre-existing property, the buffer would have had to have been 300 feet deep in order for you not to be able to see anything beyond the buffer. That is, a buffer is not a screening. A buffer is simply an area of trees to separate the properties, and as brush and what have you goes up, it will eventually screen, but it's not a, the equivalent of a natural pale fence going, dividing the two properties so neither side shall see the other.
Well, so I guess maybe, maybe the way I would respond to that is, so we agree that the ordinance requires a buffer.
Right, and there, there is a buffer.
And then, and then the next thing I would ask if we agree about is that there was a buffer.
But there's now a 25-foot buffer.
No, there's not. And that's the point I want, I want to absolutely make sure we're clear about. And if the Board would like to go take a sitewalk, there is not one person that could walk out there today and say that there is actually a buffer, because there are places, as I've shown in the photographs, that are absolutely wide open, clear lines of sight between the Twist property and the, and the project. And so if we go in order, the ordinance requires a buffer. There used to be a buffer and now there isn't.
Okay. Ms. Rowden?
If the buffer should be bigger, if it isn't there or it was cut, I think everybody's hearing what the issue is. Unfortunately, the Planning Board, and I know you've been through the bureaucratic wringer, so to speak, but I actually think your, the Code Enforcement Officer was incorrect in sending you back to the Planning Board. I believe that you need to speak with the Select Board.
She was, she was pretty specific and, and she messaged and emailed me, "Sorry it's taken so long, she's been doing some research, I want to tell you this is going back to the Planning Board from my office, it's not under my jurisdiction, sorry that you're getting dumped from office to office." So we were here in June and the Board said that it needed to consult with its legal counsel before you could even speak to us about it. So, and the Board, as I just read from your minutes the last time, said, "We want to speak to legal counsel, get guidance and input from legal counsel," and then, and, and the thing, by the way, was that's how we left it the last time, and I was the one who kept inquiring about the status of all of that. What I got back was Mike Vignali's report with no invitation to come back and speak to the Board. And so you sent us away in June to say that you were going to get input and guidance from your legal counsel. So one of my questions is, what was the legal guidance that you got from counsel? Because he must have said whether the Planning Board has jurisdiction or the Code Enforcement Officer has jurisdiction, or nobody has jurisdiction, or something.
He did not. He told, he told us that we could release the letters.
Right.
That's what we asked him about, if we could release both of, make sure you had this letter. So we didn't ask him about who has jurisdiction over it. I mean, who has responsibility for it.
Because we don't.
You, you do not have jurisdiction, just as a matter of, you cannot do a sitewalk as the Planning Board on Mr. Twist's property or on Kingsley Corner. You have no active application before you. Your jurisdiction, other than revoking a site plan, ended the moment that final Mylar was signed. It's a code enforcement. If you don't have code enforcement right now, I don't know if you've hired someone, it is a Select Board function.
I think.
Right.
Building inspector is code enforcement right now?
Right.
Yeah, the building inspector is code enforcement at this time.
Who still is beholden to the Select Board.
Right.
We, we have no authority to enforce after we have signed a plan.
Well, I guess that's a point of disagreement that we'll have because in many instances in the past, when a Planning Board has approved a plan and someone comes before the Planning Board and says there's some condition of your approval that's being violated, it is the Planning Board's jurisdiction. And we have spent now, since February, trying to get a response from Selectmen, Planning Board, Code Enforcement Officer, and, and it's just not acceptable for us now to be standing here in the middle of August and you tell us now, we were here June 13th the last time, and now you're saying it should go back to the Code Enforcement Officer who already told us that she has no jurisdiction over this. So.
Excuse me, the last time that you met with us, I specifically stated that this Board does not have the authority. That's why, your quote earlier about us not taking jurisdiction, we don't have authority to take jurisdiction on this issue.
But you didn't.
We have no statutory authority once the plan has been signed and recorded. After that, it must go to Code Enforcement in order to be remedied, or it's a civil matter.
It had all, but you know it had already been to Code Enforcement before we came here the last time.
You had mentioned, and I said, "Well, we don't have the authority, you have to go back to Code Enforcement and get them to do it."
What the minutes actually say from June 13th, Jay Rowden suggested that Planning Board not take jurisdiction and not discuss any further until Town Council has been consulted with. Jay Doggett motioned to convey the situation to Town Council for input and guidance.
That was regarding the, the letters.
No, the Board didn't engage in it, the Board did, and I thanked the Board for giving me the time to discuss.
Right.
To at least tell you what my position was. When I was done, that's what happened and we went away. And so obviously, since then, the expectation was that the Planning Board wasn't going to discuss it until Town Council had been consulted with for input and guidance. And now we're back at the end of August and you're telling me that you didn't ask the town attorney whether you have jurisdiction or not, which was the reason it was sent there, and you're telling me to go back to the Code Enforcement Officer who's already said she doesn't have jurisdiction.
We don't have jurisdiction. I mean, other than the fact that as a courtesy, we had the town engineer go out and he sent us a memo that said that it's being built in compliance with the plan.
Okay.
Therefore, if you think that there is some sort of error in the Planning Board's acceptance of the plan, that doesn't, that actually you would have to take that to, I believe that's county court.
Within 30 days, it would be the ZBAs.
Right. What I need, before we leave here tonight, what I need from this Board is a decision. I need you to, whether it's the decision I'm asking you for or not, I need the Board to actually express a decision. Then I have a decision that I can either take an appeal of administrative decision and/or a Superior Court appeal, which we've been trying not to do. So one way or the other, before we get to that point, and I won't take the Board's time because I can see where this is going, so what I'd like to be able to just make sure we all agree about tonight, your ordinance requires a buffer for a project like this. That's the first one. The second one is, there used to be a buffer. And the third one is, there is no buffer there anymore. Those are the three things that are absolutely factual.
And none of them matter.
Well, they matter to George Twist.
The plan exists, when the plan was made, then if, if George did not believe that a 25-foot buffer would be adequate, he should have appealed at that point.
No, what, the problem is that he felt because your approval indicated there would be a buffer. Yes?
There's a 25-foot buffer.
No, it's variable. But we shouldn't even be having this discussion because we don't have authority over this.
I'm going to recommend.
Okay, so what I would ask the Board is to just, if you could make a decision that if somebody makes a motion that this Board doesn't have jurisdiction over the issue that I'm asking you for, then I would like the Board to make a motion and act on that. And then I have a decision that I can go do something with.
Ms. Rowden?
I'm going to advise you do not make a motion either way because you do not have authority over this at this point.
Right.
If you wish to seek advice of counsel, that's something that you, that is an action you could do if you so choose. I would not recommend because actually, I don't think, even if you made a decision, I don't think it would be able to be upheld to the ZBA because you have nothing to make a decision about. I don't think he would have standing to take it to the ZBA. It's not an administrative decision at this point.
Then the ZBA will decide that they don't have jurisdiction over the appeal if I bring it there, and a Superior Court judge will decide that he or she doesn't have jurisdiction over the appeal that I bring to them. But I need a decision from this town now, from February until now, we've interacted with you, and I need you to make a decision that I can go take and, and appeal for George Twist's property rights. That's what I need from you tonight.
For you to get a decision to take to the ZBA or Superior Court, you will need to seek that through the Code Enforcement Officer and/or the Board of Selectmen.
So you're telling me to go back to the Code Enforcement Officer who already told me that she has no jurisdiction?
That same person is not there anymore. That person is not there anymore?
So the new Code Enforcement Officer probably might have a different legal opinion?
I do not.
We can't say supposition.
I'm sorry?
Actually, as far as I'm concerned, I am done with this discussion. We have no, I do not believe I have any jurisdiction as a Board member. I am being silent.
I agree with you too. Our expert over here tells us we don't have jurisdiction and you would have to go someplace else, so we are unable to make any kind of decision other than to suggest to you that you go to Code Enforcement.
This has really been one of the most remarkable processes. I've been practicing land use law for 23 years here in New Hampshire. I've been in every county in every part of the state. I have. the state. I have never had anything like this. February is when I submitted my letter to this board. And I'm standing here at the end of August and you're telling me to go back and do what we've already done twice. It's, it's really, it's really quite remarkably disrespectful at the, at the least. George has lived and owned that, in that property since 1988. It's really quite shameful. So, the board isn't going to make any motion?
We've been advised not to.
Could I have a quick question about my property here?
You'll have to stand up there and identify yourself. I don't know if we can even answer that.
I'm Jennifer Hever. I live at 4 Kerry Drive. And a few weeks ago, I went out to the back of the property because Frank Gibbs' guys were out there laying the leach field for the house that's directly behind my house. And when I asked him to measure the line because he was going over my 25-foot buffer from my property line to the property, he brought out the plan for me to see. And on Kerry Drive, our lots are in a weird situation where we go on a diagonal out. We don't have a straight across plot line. And his plan that he showed me shows a straight across plot line from my point all the way across. So, it took us to run rope and then measure the plot line. And more time has gone by and I'm pretty sure that he's gone over the 25-foot buffer in the furthest right-hand corner because according to his plan, I had, that's not my property. And it is, I, I, we measured it from each of my plot lines.
Okay, Jennifer.
So, I just, I'm curious as who do I go to to talk about that? That's one question. The second question is, I've looked it up and I can't find it. How far does their leach field have to be from my well?
If you have to be from your what?
My well.
75 feet.
75?
Um, regarding your property boundary, I don't know if, I, I'm not familiar with the lot configuration. If you were basing it on a tax map, sometimes tax maps are slightly off. So, that's one possibility.
It's on the town map? It's on the map that they showed when they first started?
I would look for your boundary markers as a suggestion, just as a no-cost suggestion to determine. I can't say if he was in it or wasn't, but that would be my suggestion.
So, my, but then my suggest, what I'm asking is, who do I go to if he has crossed it? Where do I go? Because obviously, it's not here.
That would be code enforcement.
Code enforcement?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um. Sure.
I'm George Twist. And just so you know, I've been there since 1988. Okay? I've paid my taxes. I've done what I was supposed to do. And I've enjoyed the back tree line for all those years. This guy comes in, he brings up a drawing, and you guys approve it. Even though all your buddies showed up and said, "We don't want it," you did it anyways. I think that maybe you people in the future would have a little more care about the town like you're supposed to and the people that are in it, that live in it already and paid your wages all this time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is preliminary consultation for a home-based business, Mr. Jordan Shackman.
Rowden?
Yeah.
I gotta step down.
Okay. All right. Mr. Melvin stepping down. Okay, this is just a preliminary discussion.
Yep.
So, I guess you can tell the board what it is that you want to do.
All right. My name is Jordan Shackman. I live at 113 North Main. I'm just looking to set up like a small area in my front, like side yard to sell like two to three vehicles. Like that's, you know, pretty much very, very basic. Like I said, it would just be like on a gravel type area.
Okay. Ms. Rowden?
So, I have a couple of questions. So, the proposed parking area that you put on your plan that you submitted?
Yep.
Is that where you would want to be having the two or three cars?
Yeah, like to, I mean, it, it could move. I mean, that's just what I was thinking. So, if that's not approved and there's another spot I could do it, you know, it would be.
And you wouldn't be storing them in the detached garage or would they be out for display?
I mean, they would be parked outside. I mean, I, I am looking to add on like a bigger garage. So, I could have like a car in the, you know, cars in the garage as well. But, I mean, they would just be simply parked neatly, you know, neatly outside or, or in the garage, you know? I couldn't say exactly.
Because one of, one of my big concerns with home-based business or home occupancy, one of the very key factors with exception of a sign, is that the exterior of the building must not create or display any evidence of the home occupation slash home-based business except for a permitted sign. Variations from the residential character and appearance is prohibited.
Right.
Right.
So, I, I question whether car sales is a.
That, that, that's storage of materials. That, that, that's not allowed for a, a, a home-based business.
Right.
Yeah. Unless you're planning on having your, the vehicles for sale displayed inside the garage and there are no dimensions. Yes, we don't know what size the garage is.
Okay.
You wouldn't be able to have a, a car sitting out on 108 with saying $700 on it, inquire within. That's not a home-based business. Occasionally, that happens, somebody selling their own personal vehicle, but not as a business.
Okay.
And they're, you're also only allowed to have one unregistered car on a residential lot.
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Rowden?
Um, so I, related to what Mr. Doggett said, i- if you were, just as an example, doing sales online and you had one or two cars, that's what I'm assuming, the size of this detached garage would be inside at all times, that may be an allowed home-based business.
Okay.
Um, but it, it's really, the outside display is out of custom with a normal residential neighborhood to have.
Right.
One or more cars consistently for sale on a property.
Right. Because then it's a, it's a.
In a garage is a different situation.
It would be like a used car lot in the middle of a residential area. So, that would be nothing that I can see that would be, according to our ordinances as a, to be approved as a home-based business.
Okay, so not even one car, even though you can have one unregistered vehicle, that wouldn't be allowed?
No, I mean, my example, I chose to put my truck for sale at the end of my driveway.
Mm-hmm.
That happens once. It's a casual sale.
Right.
It happens, there's always a car for sale there. That, sorry, that's a home, that's a, that's not a home-based business. That's a commercial enterprise.
Right. It means that you're a dealer then.
Well, right. That's the whole idea.
Right. And you, you.
And that, that, that doesn't fit with the nature of the neighborhood.
Right. And if you're proposing an additional, an addition to the garage space.
Are you going to be doing work or the car's all perfectly fine when you get them?
Well, e- e- exactly. What is this additional proposed garage space for?
Like storage of the vehicles, cleaning the vehicles?
Storage of the vehicles and cleaning the vehicles, you are very close to your wealth. And we would be very remiss to say to you, it, normally, car sales or car maintenance is not a home-based business.
Okay.
That is a full, that's a full-fledged commercial enterprise. Home-based business is an Avon lady, somebody who does accounting out of their house. But other than the sign, there should be no evidence visible that anything, any, any business takes place there.
Okay.
Ms. Rowden?
Um, if you, so this is a preliminary consultation, meaning that everything I'm saying, everything the board's saying is non-binding. You still have the right to be able to apply for a home-based business.
Okay.
If you do, I think just based on what's been expressed, I don't think you would be successful, but you still have the right to apply.
Okay.
Um, but based on that advice, the other way that you can seek to do your business if you want to is to go to the zoning board of adjustments and seek a variance.
Okay.
Um, you have to prove things like hardship and that there won't be any diminishment of values of your neighboring properties. There are five criteria. That is certainly your right to be able to seek that relief.
Okay.
If you do get relief from the zoning board, then you'd end up coming back to the planning board for a site plan.
Okay.
So, just procedurally, so you know what your options are.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you should decide to go to the zoning board, you can see the zoning board secretary for an application. And the hours are, what are the hours?
It's me, Jordan.
Well, that's what we'll do.
I'm here Mondays and Thursdays.
Okay.
And I come in during, so Molly and the messenger email me.
All right, sounds good.
And she can, she can show you what the criteria are that you would have to meet.
Okay.
To see if you want to go that way.
Can I just ask a quick question? Hi, my name's Kim Shackman. I'm his wife.
Hi.
Um, so, are you stating that going to the zoning board to adjust the zone for commercial?
No.
No.
Absolutely not. No, um.
I'm just confused. Sorry. I was listening.
In order to get a commercial property, that would actually require a, an article on the warrant and it would have to, it would require the entire town to vote on it.
Right. And, and they don't use zoning stuff.
I can't speak for the ZBA, but they have the, I don't want to say ability, but in, in their jurisdiction is the ability to say, well, yeah, we consider that a home occupation. And then you have to come back to us and we have to figure out how to make it work. Because we're land use. The ZBA is the zoning board of appeals. That, there has to be some aspect of zoning.
Okay.
That you're appealing.
Okay.
Essentially, you'd be proving or trying to prove that your property is unique enough to allow automotive sales at that scale. That's not going to impact your neighbors.
Right.
It's unique enough. It's maybe buffered up by 100 acres on either side. I, I don't know.
It's so small.
But that, that's what you would be asking the zoning board for. Because of your situation, you get relief from what is the typical zoning in the town.
Okay.
That's what you're asking them for.
And since you were stating like if you're selling like cars on the internet, but they're being stored in a garage, that's a home-based business?
Um.
I'm just confused.
Nice. Just as an example, because the, well, the main criteria I think you really don't fit is display of vehicles outside.
Okay.
You had one or two vehicles that you are restoring. I don't know what type of sales you're trying, but they are always inside garaged and you, there's no evidence that you're selling cars from your property.
Okay.
That is a much closer match to a home-based business or home occupancy than having cars with for-sale signs outside of them.
Okay. Yeah, because I think we've seen in Newton, other, I don't know if they're considered home-based businesses, but companies that do sell on the internet and the cars are parked outside.
We, we, we have several companies. I mean, we have people in town that deal with the antiques.
Okay.
That deal on the internet. That's a home-based business. They don't even have any sign outside. Actually.
Okay.
Some of them try to claim their home occupations.
Some places are grandfathered. Some places don't have property, proper authorization to be doing it. And the town maybe persecutes them or doesn't.
Right.
But to do things legally, those, those are your paths.
Right.
Okay, great. We want to do the legal way, so. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm here 12 to 8 on Thursday.
All right.
And I'm on vacation next week.
However, the office will be open.
Right.
You want to do ZBA stuff?
Not really. Unless you can give me a copy and I can just hand it across.
I have applications there. They're on the desk.
Could I educate the board on this?
Yeah. Mr. Melvin's back.
Is Mr. Melvin back?
Under state statute, after you sell five cars, you have to have a license.
Right. A deal with a license.
Right.
So, you have to be a licensed dealer. And to be a licensed dealer, there's criteria that you have to follow. And one is you have to have a 1,200 square foot structure.
Okay. We wanted to put it in a garage, so I don't need to say any measurements.
Five cars over what time period?
Say that again?
Five cars over what time period?
Twelve, twelve months.
Twelve months.
Yeah. I thought it was anything more than two.
Um, anything more than two is a, if they're not registered, can be a junkyard. That's what you were thinking.
Ooh, pretty colored ones.
View for the car?
Okay.
Oh, goodness.
Color version of the black and white we have.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is going to be a preliminary consultation for an amended site plan for Frank and Michael Quintana on behalf of SPE Real Estate. And we do have authorization from the SPE for them to speak to their piece of property since the Quintanas don't own this piece of property yet. Hi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. For the record, my name is Bruce Scammon with Emmanuel Engineering. I am the professional engineer that has been here twice before on this project, on this site. It came originally in right around 2000 when they wanted to do mini-storage. Then I've worked with Steve Early when he came in in 2005 to have the construction business be run out of it, run from this site. And today I'm here with Quintana Supply. In the audience is Mr. Quintana. He and his brother are proposing to purchase this site. They'd like to move their headquarters here. Currently, they work off at a site on Puzzle Lane and would like to move to this site. Mr. Quintana and his wife live here in town. They want to keep their business here in town. They currently are renting and they'd like to purchase this site so that they can stay here in town and, and run their business here. The site plan before you is very similar to what we presented some 12 years ago when I was here before. The existing building is here in front. We had it approved with a large 30,000 square foot building in the, sort of the central part of the lot or the rear part of the, the leveled area as it's been all leveled out for the building in the, from the original approval. So, it's ready for the existing building. The biggest difference is we're proposing no outdoor storage that the construction site had, had approval for. They had built this driveway to the rear of the lot for outdoor storage all along here. They had equipment that would be stored all in the lot. And this building was their warehouse for equipment, for maintenance on equipment previously. What we propose, some of the front building is used for a tax preparation office. That's going to stay. The rest of the building will be taken over by Quintana Supply. They're going to run their offices for their headquarters here in the front building. And then they're going to have their, storage of their products in the rear building that would be sold through that facility. The biggest question, we're here tonight and we'd really like guidance from the board, is if having storage and the sales of their materials out of this back building is acceptable within the zone. They really want to get some clarity on that because they don't want to buy the property if the board believes that this does not meet commercial zoning. So, I had a meeting with, with Jennifer on this before and I think she has something she wants to talk about.
Yeah, I could probably clarify this if that's all right.
Okay.
So, when this site, not the, the existing site plan of record for this site is expired.
Right.
So, that, that's the reason the Quintanas are here tonight. At the time, the use that was being proposed in that, that back building was warehousing. In your, the general description of your zones, since this was originally proposed, has not changed. But I happened to notice that if you look at the commercial zone, the uses that are permitted are any permitted use in the residential zones or retail business or services except those listed below, which there aren't unlisted below, and office buildings. Those are the permitted uses in the commercial zone. In the light industrial zone, of which at first glance, I actually presumed that this lot was in the light industrial zone. It is not. It is in the commercial zone. Warehousing is specifically. Warehousing is specifically called out as an appropriate use in the light industrial commercial zone. So, my question, and I don't have guidance other than stating it is called out in your light industrial and it is not called out as a permitted use explicitly in your commercial zone is whether warehousing is acceptable or whether they should seek a variance. And I do want to remind you, this is just a preliminary consultation. It is, so it's non-binding, but...
I think part of it is linguistics. Warehousing can either mean, gee, I rent out a storage bays. That's, that is considered warehousing. Or if this is to having my own storage area for my business stock, that's a different factor.
And because their offices will actually be at the site, I think that may be a deciding factor for you?
Right.
But I do want to say warehousing, just in terms of a use, is different than general retail and office because there can be larger traffic volume because of delivery trucks. So...
And that would have to be taken into account, plus setbacks.
As it's proposed, as far as just general lot setbacks, it does meet those setbacks.
Oh, okay.
Those haven't changed since this was originally designed.
I don't have my scale and I can't read with the measurements up on the top. So, it was like, okay, that's close, but...
It made the 50-foot setback to residential and the 25-foot to other commercial zones.
Okay.
So, where that plan has expired, they could put their building like exactly where this one was proposed originally or they could move it or, like, what is their thing to do?
If they chose to move it right now, they certainly, if they wanted to try and do a bigger building because that suited their needs, this would be the time for them to consider that.
The only thing I'd say is, I'm not an attorney, so I know you say it's expired, but they have some vested rights into this because they have leveled the site. The drainage is all put in for this site. So, you know, the ponds were built in the rear. There's a lot more than just, they fixed up the front building as part of the site development. So, like I said, I'm not an attorney. I just, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention because there could be some discussion on whether they have vested the site because of all the infrastructure that was put in association with the original site plan. But that's not my place to say, and it's not, at a preliminary hearing, it's not for us to make that decision tonight. But I just wanted to put it on record that there is some vesting
Right.
because of the sites significantly developed.
That may very well meet some of the...
Modern standards, modern criteria.
No. Active and substantial development.
There was nothing on the original plan indicating what threshold the board would consider that. So, that is certainly a question. The septic system was put in on the site. Some of the paving was done. The large building and the area to the back was never fully completed. There wasn't, so...
I think more the question is what the use is going to be. That's what we have to decide whether we think it fits over here in commercial or if he's going to need to go get a variance from them.
Absolutely. And the thing I think I'd also bring to everyone's attention is, it doesn't specifically say warehousing would not be allowed in the zone. I mean, I grew up and had an Agway store and we had a large warehouse as part of the Agway store because we sold products. Our client sells products and this is, this is sort of around that same vein. I think that it's a much cleaner business than the construction business that might have, you know, early morning delivery, you know, trucks unloading and loading. I worked very closely through this with the Howard Lane butters. When we did this before, there was, there was a lot of discussions about, you know, starting equipment. There was storage of materials in the back, large stockpiles. We're proposing to do away with all of those things. So, and still have a storefront out here on the road. So, I think that the board ought to think about those things as making that part of that decision and that it's not doing heavy maintenance on large equipment inside a building in an, you know, basically a pitted area, you know, that's very...
What kind of things would you be storing in that building?
What they, they sell clean room supplies.
Just identify yourself first if you would.
Frank Quintana.
Thank you.
I am the owner of Quintana Supply. I was here a little over two years ago.
I know you're on...
Begging for your help. General Industrial Supply Company. If you guys ever wanted to go to my office, you can see what we do. We sell janitorial, clean room supplies, packaging supplies, paper supplies.
I remember that. Okay, I remember that.
Nothing hazardous, nothing flammable. We do light assembly, but yes, it's just a fulfillment warehousing distribution business.
Okay, thanks.
You were in front of us a couple of years ago looking at...
Where they are now.
Yeah, right.
Right, there they are.
Time is where we are now.
Right.
Okay.
But, and I think, you know, you made a good point, really, in terms of, you know, you're calling this a warehouse, but it's really the, their storage area for their sales. It's not really, it's not a warehousing business. It's storage for their, for their sales.
I do, you know, if the tipping point is, what kind of trucks are they bringing in? Traffic patterns, hours, that's all things if they come back with a site plan based on whatever your opinion is? You can address those at that point, so...
Sure.
And I have to, I didn't catch your name, but are you a Skaman?
I am.
Okay.
Yes, from Stratum.
I thought so.
I just had, does that little square on the left, is that included too or is that a different area?
This lot here?
Yeah.
It's a different lot, but it's a...
It's separated by a access to the...
But it's, but it goes along with the big lot.
It does.
It does, it is included, that's what's my question.
Correct.
Yeah.
It is. And we're not proposing anything at this point on that. And if they wanted to, they would have to come back to the board to do anything on that lot.
Right.
One of the discussions was the septic. When I did the design on the septic originally, facilitating both facilities, with the state regulations at that point, it was designed for 1,712 gallons per day. The state new regulations is 15 gallons per day per employee. So, it could, the septic for just this lot, because we had done a separate one for the other lot and this one's all built, could house up to, or handle up to 114 people working on site. So, their proposal...
You'd have to build a much bigger building to get those in.
Right now, they have 15 to 20 employees in that ballpark. You know, maybe they can get up to 30 or 40 employees, plus you have your tax business out here. So, the septic that's there is far superior to what they need. So, they're ready to move in and have that be all set. It would take, as I talked with Jen, it would take a new approval by the state just to change the use, which would be fine to do that as part of whatever process, whether it's...
Septic system? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. No, it's just a change in use because of the, I wouldn't be calling it warehousing and I'd want to use the current regulations so that we would move forward and have that designed correctly.
One major question that I would have is, while I'm guessing from the way this is proposed, you're buying both lots.
It's my understanding that's part of the same, it's a one...
It's part of it, yeah.
One sale for both lots. Just the way it came to Steve Early and S&amp;R Construction, they came together as a group.
On a single deed.
Yeah, this is actually just a right-of-way between the two lots.
No, no, it's not a right-of-way.
No, there are two lots.
That's deeded land. Yeah, that's the access to Coleman's...